You want to go?
The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of December 16th, 2021 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with a presentation by Dr. Toback. Sorry, hold on one second. Move to reconvene. Mr. Bubba, Mrs. Putup. I think you'll need another recall, uh, roll call, rather, Mr. Moffett, sorry.
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Sheer.
Here.
Now you can go. Thank you.
Ready? Right, can everybody hear me? Okay, good. Okay. So, Mr. Wizniewski? One up? Okay. So, this evening, we're pleased to recognize Wayne Valley Assistant Principal Scott Wizniewski, who recently received the Visionary Leader of the Year Award from the New Jersey Principal and Supervisors Association. Since he was first hired in 2016, Mr. Wizniewski has been at Wayne Valley. He works as a supervisor of math, computer science, and counseling. So, just a few words about Mr. Wizniewski and his work. So, the role of the school leader changed dramatically in the past 20 years for several reasons, especially when it comes to dealing with student issues. One factor includes technology, cell phones, computers, and the impact that those devices have along with social media. Students are communicating at all hours of the day and night, and now, schools are responsible for addressing many of those issues because New Jersey HIB laws require schools to investigate incidents 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I can assure you, that's a tall order. However, Mr. Wizniewski did not receive this award because of his ability to handle an extraordinary workload or because he does an excellent job with dealing with HIB issues. He received the award for visionary leadership. He received the award because he, along with the outstanding staff and administrative team at Wayne Valley, envisioned ways to transform the climate and culture at Wayne Valley High School. He believed that the traditional role of the assistant principal could be transformed, where the focus was not rules and rule enforcement, but instead fostering a school culture and climate where students love to be in school and feel a strong connection to their teachers and to other students. He continued to push and build upon his vision each year. Mr. Wizniewski received this award because he took a vision and a collection of good ideas and made them into a reality that benefits all staff and students at Wayne Valley. The net effect can be seen in the number of disciplinary referrals made by the staff. Five years ago, it was common to have over 1,000 disciplinary referrals written by the staff each year. That number has now been reduced to about 100 or less. How can school leaders better handle HIB cases that occur after school, off of school property? The answer is to prevent those cases from happening in the first place because there's a respectful school culture where bullying is not acceptable. How does a school successfully connect students who are struggling with the services and supports they need? The answer is to develop a school culture that encourages students to be leaders and not bystanders and to create awareness of available supports. How can school leaders find ways to help students who are suffering and feel alone in the world? The answer is to develop a school culture where all students feel connected and valued. How can school leaders address mental health issues when the system is already overtaxed? The answer is you apply for a grant, you win the grant, and you bring mental health first aid training to your school. Mr. Wizniewski wrote a winning grant that allows training for high school students to identify, understand, and respond to signs of mental health or substance abuse. How does a school leader maximize services for students? You create a culture of cooperation where students are first, where school employees and all areas are encouraged to share information and work together efficiently. So, congratulations, Mr. Wizniewski, and thank you for all you've done for the students and staff of Wayne Valley High School. Okay. Mr. Hold on. Mr. Pauzuski, I was wondering if you can come forward. I know you had a few words you wanted to share.
Glad everybody can come out tonight. This is my 24th year in Wayne, and over the course of those years, I made a couple of decisions, a couple that I'm really, really proud of. One is being able to convince Mr. Wizniewski to leave his assistant principalship in Dumont and come join our team at Wayne Valley. And not only am I very proud of it, I'm very lucky to have him. So, I want to congratulate him. I want to say how proud I am to work with him, to be able to write a letter in support of this for him, so happy that his wife and children are here to see it, and just congratulations, awesome job. There's the girls. Get them on camera.
Come on up for a photo op, family.
Yeah. Come on up, girls. And Stacy.
Sure. A couple of the decisions I was really lucky to make, I think, and proud to make. One of them was, oh, 20 years ago, I think, when I was able to convince Kathy Sinram to be my assistant coach, the Wayne Valley Girls Basketball Program. She took over for me in, what, 2003, and has had great success with the Girls Basketball Program. The next decision, which is really bright of me, I think, was to hire her as our head soccer coach. We see the results of that decision. One other decision I was very happy and proud to make was to bring Mr. Drajac to us from West Essex. We were able to convince him where he was there for too many years, we won't say how many, and he's done a great job leading our athletic program. This time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Drajac, introduce Miss Sinram.
Before I introduce the girls' soccer team, I just have to say, and I work with Scott Wizniewski every day, and he is amazing. He's an amazing administrator. We are very lucky to have him in the Wayne school system. So, I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education and Dr. Toback for recognizing and honoring our Wayne Valley Girls Soccer Team tonight. Now, we wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't have one of the top coaching staffs in the state. We have Coach Kelly Wizniewak, who is our varsity volunteer coach and a proud Wayne Valley alum. Our freshman coach is James Camm, who's also our head coach for Boys Fencing and Boys Golf. Our JV coach is Mike Potowski, who not only leads our JV team to very successful seasons every year, but is also a very valuable varsity assistant during tournament play. And then, of course, Coach Kathy Sinram. In the six seasons that I've had the pleasure to work with Coach Sinram, she has built our girls' soccer program into one of the best in North Jersey and now, one of the best in the state. Coach Sinram was recently named 2021 New Jersey Girls Soccer Coach of the Year by NJA.com. Congratulations, Coach Sinram. Onto the team. What an amazing season. Our team had an incredible run of 17 straight victories, and along the way, they won the Independence Division of the Big North Conference for the fourth, or was it fifth year in a row? Coach Sinram?
Five out of seven.
Five, okay. Five, there we go, five out of seven. They won the Passaic County Championship for the first time since 2007. They won the NJSIAA North One Group Three State Sectional for the first time since 1999, and they went on and made history with our first-ever state championship by defeating Princeton 2-1 in overtime at Kane University. It was the first-ever state championship for a Passaic County public school girls' soccer team, which is, that's an incredible accomplishment. So, I'm proud to say that I loved watching this team play. They weren't selfish, they played with passion, grit, and resilience. They played with valley pride, and they had fun. I really enjoyed, I really had fun watching you guys play this year, so thank you for making my year this past fall. Now, with great effort and attitude comes great rewards. Several of our players were named to the first and second team, all league, all county, all North Jersey, and all state teams. But they didn't play for individual glory because if they did, they wouldn't be standing here today. They played the game as was meant to be played as a team and truly enjoyed playing together as one. In addition, they are true student athletes. They're members of the National Honor Society, they're peer leaders, and their average, average They are an amazing group of young women who will go down in Wayne Valley history as the greatest girls' soccer team of all time. Congratulations, ladies. Coach Sinram, can you please come down, do the honors, and announce the members of our 2021 Wayne Valley State Championship Girls Soccer Team?
Thank you.
So, you're going to call alphabetical order?
Um, I have it like three.
Okay, so that's fine.
Hang alphabet.
So, I'll get the ticket. I'll get it.
Okay. Megan Josak. And our seniors, Emily Bolson. Basketball injury. Lexi Jasson, unfortunately could not be here tonight. And last but not least, Juliana Vavino.
Girls, get in front. Sir Pauzuski, why don't we move the chair?
Yeah. Something back.
Okay. Yes, it says Eileen, Matt, Stacy.
There we go.
Nice job, girls.
Congrats, girls.
No, Maddie.
I know you're all leaving. Congratulations, ladies, fantastic season. Have a good evening, get out of here. Thank you, thank you again.
Okay, I think we're quiet enough. Moving on to our board member recognition program this evening for our outgoing board members, we're going to begin with Mr. Giordano, who will be presented by Mr.
Mr. Giordano, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to thank you for your service. Though it was short, your impact will be felt for years in this district because it's always been about the kids. That's the cliche we hear all the time, but it's always, it is with you, a motto you've lived by your entire time here on the board, and I thank you on behalf of the Board and the citizens of Wayne for your service. Congratulations.
Mr. Giordano? Oh. I didn't realize doing that.
It's entirely up to you.
Let me get my notes and use my voice. Boy, I wasn't expecting this one. This is great. I thought I'd be over there in the corner, like I'm always in the corner. That's okay. I'm going to take one indulgence here.
Thank you.
Balance. I always try to be balanced. My fellow Waynites, I wish to take this time to thank you for support during this three-year ride. If I were to describe this journey, I would say it was a real roller coaster. Some people think that means it was a bad thing, but I feel just the opposite. Roller coasters are the biggest rides with the longest lines of any ride at the amusement park. They look scary from the outside, and some people will never set foot on one, but I do notice that when people get off the ride, they're always smiling, and that's how I feel. The twists and turns of this journey have been a mirror of those people riding one of those fast-moving and thrilling events. While some people remember the spirited debates between board members and those that came from the public, I'll remember all the things as we, as a board accomplished. Old-day kindergarten is something that comes to mind and I can hang my hat on. The many accolades the district has garnered from the state and from the media at large also stand out, like our fine young ladies who won the championship. There's still much for these board members to do, but let's take a moment and remember the great things we have done for our students over these great years with these great volunteers. Since I never served in the military or the police, it was a thrill for me to be able to place my hand on the Bible and swear a note to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. I was walking two inches off the ground for days after that. Many, excuse me, many of my family have long served our nation in many different ways, and I was able to add my name to those who have served in some capacity, and that's definitely been checked off of my bucket list. My father served in this town's juvenile council in the 1970s. One of my uncles served as the Board of Education president in his hometown of Kearney for many years in the 1980s. I have many policemen in my family, including police chiefs, officers, and even those wounded in the line of duty. I have to think that many of them can now act, can count on me as a person who threw his hat into the ring and said, "I want to make a difference," and I hope I have. Of everything I look back upon, I'll be entirely grateful to be able to present my son Anthony with his moving up ceremony certificate after finishing George Washington Middle School. The only other thing I can remember just as fondly was being able to hand my daughter, Abby, her high school diploma. In both cases, I was able to tell them how proud I was of them and how much I loved them right at that important moment. Being able to show my love for them in such a magnanimous way is something that I will take to my grave. I owe a debt of thanks to the Board of Education for giving me that chance. I hope with all the controversies we have weathered over the past few months, no matter which side of the topic you're on, that you understood that I was always in the best interest of students and the citizens of Wayne that I had in mind. No matter whether you agreed with my vote or disagreed with my vote, I always attempted to conduct myself as if every single subcommittee meeting, executive meeting, professional workshop, or meeting in town chambers was precious, and I treated it with respect and reverence because that is how I felt. I accidentally listened into a conversation between Assistant Superintendent Donna Reichman and some other administrators a year or so as I walked into the room. They didn't know I was actually there, so they were speaking freely for that, but the only thing I remember from them saying to me was, "Well, I'm not sure how Mr. Giordano would handle the situation, but he's always a gentleman, and I know he will handle it like that." I want to call that conversation out because it was and always will be my intention to act as a gentleman, to honor my parents for raising me this way and to set an example for my children to follow. So, I just wanted to thank Donna for unintentionally reinforcing me that was doing my best, and of course, I was setting the right, right tone, excuse me. Finally, I wish all the current board members the best of luck. You have many challenges ahead of you, but I know that you have Wayne's best interests in mind. To departing members, the best of luck, health, and happiness. You did a great job. And finally, to those who are coming into the next meeting, buckle up. The roller coaster ride is about to resume. You'll love it, you'll hate it, and maybe even fear it, but in the end, you were here for the students and the citizens of Wayne above all. This is a team effort. You are not alone. You'll be great. Thank you all, and God bless.
Moving on to our next board trustee, Stacy Shear, and she'll be receiving her plaque from Mrs. Putup.
When I was elected to the Board, as everyone else, you've come on, you're a volunteer, and you hope that you have a great working relationship with your colleagues on the Board, and I like to say that I have. You don't expect to make friends. Especially someone who is such a passionate person, a passionate teacher, and a passionate board member, and it's the thing I love about you the most. Thank you, Stacy. There's your word.
Okay. I don't have a whole type of speech like that. It's funny you should say that what you love about me the most is what other people hate about me the most. But I can say that in my five years of doing this, you can say whatever you want about me, I am truthful. I am a straight shooter, and whether the public agrees with me or not, I made my decisions, and I never, I never went back on them. Whatever I said in the executive meetings was the same thing I said in public. And that truthfulness is one thing that I was aspiring to achieve when I came on the Board, because when I ran, every time I ran, it was always about transparency. And one thing that I could always promise people was that I'm gonna tell you the truth. You're not gonna like it half the time, but I'm gonna tell you the truth. My, my friends and my family say to me constantly, "Why do you do this?" They watch the meetings, they hear the meetings, and they just can't... I see them shaking their heads in the audience now. They couldn't even believe it and say, "Why do you do this?" And I honestly can say, yes, there were some very rough times, but there were some really, really rewarding times. I got to work with a great bunch of people and hear everybody's perspective on things. I got to sit and defend what I think is one of the greatest school systems. That's why I moved here. That's why I'm still here. And, and I will be here until my children are done with school. Then I'm out. But Wayne, the Wayne School District has so much to offer between the wonderful administration we have and the passionate Board, the passionate parents. Like, you can't ask for more. And I am very proud of this town. I'm so proud of the schools, and I'm proud of everything that I have done for this district. I really just want to thank everybody, the parents, my fellow board members, my lovely friend Suzanne. We were, we did get very lucky. We started together, and we are now true friends. Administration, you've done a wonderful job. And I just want to say the best of luck to everybody. I want to wish the new board members the absolute best of luck. It's, it's going to be a challenge. I'm not gonna lie to you. It's going to be a challenge. But just please stay truthful to everything that you've thought, even when the public doesn't agree with you. Stick to it, because that's what's important. One thing I want to say is that I am obsessed with elephants. Anyone, I wear it around my neck all the time. I have it on my ring. I have it tattooed on my body. Everybody who knows me knows. They're all over my house. I'm obsessed with elephants. And the reason I bring that up is because most people think that you have elephants in your house and it's just for good luck. That's not it. The reason that I think that elephants are so important, and I, I love what they exude in the world is because there are sisterhood, and if there's an elephant that is in trouble or needs help, all the other elephants will stand around it, facing with their back to the hurt, the injured elephant, and just watch and be on guard to protect the injured elephant. And that's how I look at it right now, is that some of our students, all of our students, no matter what their gender, what their race, what their religion, what their sexual identity is, they all need to be protected. So let's take a note from the elephants and protect all of the Wayne students. Thank you so much.
My least favorite type of board meeting. Not a fan of goodbyes. And last but certainly not least, our longest-serving trustee leaving us this evening after nine years of service to this community, Mrs. Alberts. Presented by Mr. Bubba.
Always. Nine years. What you've meant to this Board, I don't think anybody will really fully know for another 10 years. Your ability to see the future and see ramifications of decisions five years out is like nothing I've ever seen before. And I hope that other board members, especially the new ones, come in, come in and understand that. Decisions made today do not affect just today. They have to see everything. And I think that was one of the things that I don't think anybody did on this Board better than you did. On a personal note, my first year on this Board was not as much fun as I would have liked it to have been. The one person that was always there. Anytime I had a question, anytime I had an issue, you were always there. You were always the one. That is the person you are. So I want to thank you for your service to this Board, to this town, your perspective, but also your friendship.
Thank you very much, Mike. Okay. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve on this Board for nine years. I've had the absolute honor of working with not only this group of colleagues, but many extraordinary board members over that time. I've been able to learn from them, ask questions of them, and watch how they role modeled being the best board member that they knew how to be. And that happens in every decision, in every meeting, and in every conversation that the Board has to come to some type of collaborative decision. I've also had the honor to work for the last several years with what I think is one of the best administrative teams Wayne has. These are people who every day are dedicated to doing what's right, whether it's easy or it's hard, so that the students and the staff in Wayne receive absolutely everything possible to provide the best education for our students. So I want to thank my colleagues currently on the Board, as well as my colleagues over the past nine years. The achievements that we've, we've had over the last nine years are never the result of one person. They're the result of collaboration of many board members who work tirelessly to make sure that first and foremost, student education and student achievement are uppermost in every decision that's made. So I thank previous board members, I thank current board members, and I would like to speak maybe for just a moment to the next year, the next many years. We have many very dedicated board members who will be continuing on this Board. We have three excellent new board members who will come in, and I know will do their absolute best to learn, to listen, but to bring what they think is right every day to the decision-making process for our students. So I congratulate you, we welcome you, and we support you. And I want to thank you for volunteering to step up to this job, where I promise you, there will be many, many more good feelings and many, many more senses of achievement and I made a difference than there will be times where you're not so sure that that's the case. So we thank you. We appreciate that you'll do this. You have our support. Again, I want to thank everyone involved at the district. And my final challenge, something I kept in mind for the past nine years, is for a Board collectively to come together, reform every year, but strive for the same goal, to make Wayne the best world-class district for our students and our staff. So thank you again for the past nine years. It's been my privilege and my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, before I sit down, I'll open it up to our administration for comments.
So, so much has already been said, but the administration would certainly like to thank our outgoing board members, Arlene Albany, Matt Giordano, and Stacy Shear for their many contributions to the Board of Education, and also for their support over the years. So just a few personal notes about our board members. So for the public, this is a very demanding group. And they're a group of board members that are demanding because they care deeply about the school district. They ask the right questions. Our outgoing board members all have their backgrounds that lend to a benefit to the Board. We have two educators, and we have an accountant. And so the financial expertise, educational expertise have been a major driver to a lot of the enhancements we've had over the past few years. So some really important initiatives, some unbelievable accomplishments in, in just, you know, a relatively short amount of time. Of course, full-day kindergarten, the early childhood center, facility enhancements, technology enhancements. When you hear from our, when you hear from our, our financial position, from our auditors in the coming weeks, you'll come to understand the strong financial position of the district. All these things were developed over time. During the time period, you know, that our, our board members who are leaving the Board, they participated in all these discussions. They had a major part in moving all these different projects ahead. So I, for one, will certainly miss all of them. We look forward to maintaining contact with you, to staying in touch. And I just, it's hard to really understand from the public what advocates our board members are for students, for the community, and their commitment to the students is certainly extraordinary from, from my point of view. And I will certainly miss all of you, and thank you for doing a wonderful job in supporting us over all these years.
Anyone else from the administration? Feel free. Board member, comments at this time? Okay, well, we'll save your thoughts till the end. Moving on, superintendent's report. Superintendent has some very important updates for us this evening, so listen closely.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much. Mr. Meredith.
So this evening, I'm going to focus my reporting on the COVID situation in our school system and across the state. So at this point, we experienced, we're experiencing a sharp increase in the number of cases of COVID among our students and staff, and so I wanted to report to the community. We do not have a presentation tonight, but I provided the community with a table that shows the dramatic increase in COVID cases. And as you can see, when you add it together, the number of students that are under quarantine, the number of staff members who are quarantined, you can see significant increases, doubling, tripling, depending on the category that you look at, significant increases. And so we've made a number of announcements about different things that are happening in the district as a result. Recently, the New Jersey Department of Health moved all of New Jersey into, there's a map that they produced. The map is now all orange. It means that we are all in a high-risk area, a high-risk region of the state, which required some changes, including a change in the amount of quarantine time when students are unfortunately exposed to close contacts, things like that. Okay, so what we did is we released an FAQ. And so I'm just gonna talk about that for a few minutes, because there's one thing I wanted to address at the very top of it. First question that was asked regularly, is there a plan to shut down schools after the holiday break? Okay, so the answer is absolutely not. There is no plan. There's rumors, there's speculation. There's a lot of social media activity about that, but there is no plan to shut down schools. Instead, every effort is being made to keep our schools open, which is why we're taking steps to selectively shut down in certain situations, some classrooms and some other situations where we're absolutely forced to do so. And again, there is no, there's no enjoyment in, in taking that kind of action. I talked a little bit about the quarantine time, back to 14 days, but the next part of the FAQ is, why does my child have to continue to quarantine? If the entire class is placed under quarantine, my child was already fully vaccinated, had COVID previously, or was already under quarantine. So there's many parents who have said, "Well, that makes no sense. Why did I have my child vaccinated? Why am I following the rules? What's the point if in the end there's a situation where even though my child is vaccinated, they have to quarantine?" So what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about some changes that came about yesterday and today. So there is new guidance. There is new information from the New Jersey Department of Health based on these different updates that were distributed across New Jersey over the past few days. The first one involves the change in quarantine time. So as I said previously, there was a 14-day standard that existed when there was a quarantine. That has been reduced to 10, okay? That's one option. Or you can go back to the eight-day option with testing. But that's not an option that was selected here in Wayne. So we go back essentially at a minimum to where we were previously with the 10 days of quarantine. After further discussion with the Wayne Department of Health, there's also consideration, again, there's, there is a bigger picture. And the bigger picture, when it comes to quarantine sometimes, is concerns about keeping whole schools open. So in some cases, there's, there's action that's taken by the Department of Health. We do work closely with them. We ask them for their guidance. We ask them for their feedback and what they think should happen. So originally, there were, there were classes that were quarantined, and so the whole idea of being quarantined on top of being quarantined. In other words, students leading up to a full class quarantine may have tested positive and may have been quarantined individually, but then, once you get to a certain threshold where there's three or more students that are under quarantine, that's considered an outbreak. And so when there's an outbreak in a classroom, and this mostly applies to elementary schools, then the entire class, the students and staff are quarantined. Okay? So after further discussion, after hearing concerns from parents, we have to go back, and we, we are, we are working with the Department of Health to look at that, to basically consider the fact that if someone, if a child is quarantined, then they should be able to continue in school. If a child is already under quarantine and the quarantine expires and they can come back to school before the rest of the class's quarantine is up, then those students will be able to return. However, there were some problems with that. Okay, so just being honest with the community, we have had a tremendous problem, even though we've raised subrates, even though we're, have one of the highest subrates, the pay rates in, in the county, we've had a lot of problems obtaining substitutes. And so when, if you go over, like I have a summary of where we are with substitutes, because a lot of what we're talking about would require substitutes, because sometimes teachers are quarantined, sometimes, you know, with their students. In other cases, we need to hire substitutes to watch students who are returning to school. And in some cases, it could be a very small number of students. You might have one student reporting back to class while everyone else is under quarantine, depending on the circumstances. But one of the issues that we face is the fact that in some cases, we have about a 70, 75% on the high end where we cannot fill substitute vacancies. So in other words, we are already way beyond our limits in terms of dealing with absences. So that is definitely a struggle. And even in the best case of scenarios, we have about one-third of our substitute vacancies unfilled, depending on the school and depending on the week. So this is all, you know, depending on, you know, the different situations at each of our schools. So we really are stretched to the limits. And so I guess the, the main point for all of our parents is we are looking to make some changes based on the new guidance, but that, those new changes will not happen immediately. We're gonna work on rolling those changes out when we're able to do it. But there, there are no promises in terms of, you know, the feasibility of some of these things. So yes, we're able to do it. Yes, we're able to move ahead. How that will work out, how that will look in the end is something we do have to work on. So that's that report. And also, I don't know, Mrs. Sam, were you gonna report on the retreat at all? Okay, so just a week ago, the Board of Ed participated in a retreat to consider some significant issues and to hear information from our architect, from our business official. So ultimately, the Board was able to discuss the affordable housing projects that are going to be built within the next few years. The Board received a projection on enrollment for the next five years, was able to discuss not only the overall impact of the construction on the school district in the short term, but also in the long term, to analyze the attendance zones, to look at possible facility projects. So prior to the pandemic, there was a number of important facility projects that were under consideration that were revisited by the Board of Ed at the retreat. So it was a very productive retreat. The Board also heard an overview of enhancements to our educational programs over the past year or so. And so I believe it was an extremely productive retreat, and I believe the Board received a tremendous amount of valuable information that will allow the Board to, to think about solutions to some significant problems facing the community in the coming years.
HIB?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Do you have it? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay. So unfortunately, this has been a very busy reporting period. During this reporting period, there were 17 incidents of HIBs that were investigated since the last report. Four of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of an HIB incident.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Toback. Now we'll move on to our student representatives.
A number of Wayne Hills Automotive Technology students participated in a virtual behind-the-scenes tour of Ross Shade Racing Engines in Mooresville, North Carolina. This unique learning opportunity was sponsored by the Universal Technical Institute. Todd English, VP Strategic Partnerships and Marketing, hosted the event and showed students the facility that produces over 1,000 purpose-built racing engines annually. Students learned how research and development partnerships with manufacturers such as Ford and Toyota result in not only racing engine improvements, but also include advances in passenger vehicles, aerospace, and even the medical industries. Miss Hart's Foods won classes and made pies last weekend in anticipation of Thanksgiving. The lattice work was optional, and they successfully completed beautiful apple pies for the holiday weekend. During the month of November, 90 members of the Wayne Hills Leo Club created over 100 thank you cards to be distributed to deployed troops, veterans, wounded warriors and their caregivers, boot camp graduates, and first and frontline responders via Operation Gratitude. Wayne Hills School Leo Club wants to give their thanks to our American heroes. The Wayne Hills Student Council held its annual Spirit Week during the week of November 15 through 19. This yearly tradition is designed to foster a sense of charity and caring, and this was accomplished through healthy competition between each grade level. Students earn points by wearing themed clothing for each day, collecting gift cards for community members in need, and by competing in penny wars. The money collected will be donated to a local charity. 24 students from the Wayne Hills Leo Club and six from the Wayne Valley Leo Club visited mentally disabled adults at Found Abilities in Wayne for a holiday party. Their mission statement explains that Found Abilities was created to provide individuals with disabilities a safe, secure, and supportive environment that would promote a sense of self-worth, acceptance in the local community. This is accomplished through social interaction, supervised games and events, and services through volunteer efforts. Leo Club members and special adults, some of whom are graduates of Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley, connected while singing seasonal carols and eating pizza and baked goods provided by the Leo Clubs. Mayor Vergano and others from Town Hall also joined in the fun. However, the biggest attraction by far was when Sam had to join the party. He distributed $25 gift cards to each of the 21 disabled adults on behalf of both Wayne Leo Clubs. A wonderful day was had by all, and memories were made that will last a lifetime. Very uniquely, with over 100 individual athletes participating in the North Jersey High School's Singles Bowling Championship, seniors Zach Jordan and Erica Cusidi took the first-place trophies for both boys and girls respectively. Zach Jordan was also recognized by the Bergen Record as Athlete of the Week. Both boys and girls swimming are off to a great start with several meet wins. Our winter track teams are ready for our first polar bear meet that will be hosted at Wayne Valley also on Friday, 12-17, to open the season. Our dance team is making its return debut to host with a halftime show for boys' basketball this Friday. With a full roster, our wrestling team will host Paseo on Wednesday, 12-22, to start their season as well. The Wayne Knights Ice Hockey are off to a strong start with a, with a season record of 4-2 against some very strong competition. And lastly, our Wayne Hills Ski Team has been hitting the slopes and are seeing significant improvements on time leading into the first few races. Thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Oller and Ms. Gachion for receiving the Governor's Educator of the Year Award from Wayne Valley High School. A recognition, a recognition well deserved for the dedication of the biology teacher, Ms. Oller, and education specialist, Ms. Gachion. Wayne Valley Assistant Principal Scott Wisniski was named the NJPSA Visionary Leader of the Year Award for Wayne, New Jersey. Every year, the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association honors the outstanding work of leaders and students across the state. The National Honor Society is once again conducting its Kids Helping Kids program, which takes place weekly at the Wayne Public Library. With this long-lasting program, the NHS students offer extra help tutoring and tutoring to elementary, middle, and high school students. On Thursday, December 16, the winter concert performance will be held at 7:30 PM in the Wayne Valley Auditorium. This concert will be featuring Valley's talented chorus, chamber choir, and symphonic band. On Thursday, December 9, Wayne Valley held a well-attended orientation for all incoming eighth-grade students and their parents. They were able to tour the buildings, view the classrooms, meet staff and upperclassmen, and, and discuss many opportunities available at Valley. Representatives from various clubs, activities, and sports teams were stationed around the building located by an interactive map for the future students to engage with. Congratulations to senior Maddie Martin on being awarded the newest 12 Scholar-Athlete Award for December. Maddie is a three-sport varsity athlete for tennis, fencing, and golf, along with being an outstanding advancement placement student with a 4.14 GPA. Congratulations to Maddie, and we wish you the best with the last two seasons of competition at Valley. Congratulations to the Wayne Valley Girls Soccer Team on the historic NJSIAA Group Three State Championships with their victory over Princeton. For the first time in school history, a team won the Group Three title with Erin Clark, Kelsey Ramos, and Emily Josak and Ashton McCraw awarded all state champions. And congratulations to Kathleen Sinram, who was awarded the NJ.com Girl Soccer Coach of the Year.
Thank you so much, ladies. Were there any donations for the evening? Mr. Moffett?
So the Wayne Education Foundation donated $3,439.50 to George Washington Middle School, and the donation is to be used for the purchase of 10 iPads and 10 cases for the iPads. The Incera supermarkets donated $1,000 to the Preakness Early Childhood Center, and the donation is to be used for the school playground.
The Wayne Education Foundation donated 25 V7 Pro wireless mice to be used with Chromebooks for Mrs. Rika's first-grade class, and this is for the JFK Elementary School, and this was an amount of $252.97. The AP Terhune PTO donated a cover expenses for Camp Fairview, and this was a donation of $80.
Well, thank you to our Wayne Education Foundation and our PTOs for all they do for our students. It's amazing. At this point, we're moving on to revisions. Mr. Moffa?
Yes, we have four tonight under T Emergent Human Resources. T number one, which is approval of district staff. Line number one, Colleen Monahan, is to read $19,162 prorated for step two of the Paris Salary Guide, 5.5 hours per day, no benefits. T number two, approval of revised items under line number six, Corianne Gunstra, G-R-U-N-S-T-R-A, revised end date from December 17, 2021 to December 31, 2021. Under number T three, approval of appointment of certified and non-certified district substitute, line number one, Maria Macoud, M-A-C-K-S-O-U-D, is RN revised from hourly rate to $200 per day. And the last change to tonight's agenda is T number seven, approval of resignations and retirements. Line number one is Catherine Carnavale, revised date from December 23, 2021 to December 31, 2021. And line number two, Carol C-A-C-I-O-P-P-E, revised date from December 23, 2021 to December 31, 2021. That concludes the changes.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
Move it.
Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Giordano. Anyone on agenda items?
The superintendent's.
Come to the mic, sir. I can't hear you.
Michael Goddisman, are the superintendent's report, is the superintendent's report considered part of agenda's item?
Sort of, technically.
Okay.
You can feel free to speak on that.
Just a quick question. I know there was mention of the retreat where there was a discussion about the, where there was a discussion about the upcoming, forthcoming, foreboding increase in student population, and it was reported today that it's estimated we're going to have in total somewhere around 2,987 units being built in our town over the next five to seven years, many of which are two- and three-bedroom units, which would leave me to believe that that is going to contribute to a substantial increase in school population. I'm just wondering if the board or the administration has been given any type of estimated numbers as to the anticipated rise in student population due to those developments? Thank you.
Jenny Franklin, 21 Keelana Drive. I'm here today as a former Wayne School's parent of 18 years. I just thought it was really important that we have someone on this side of the podium say thank you to these three board members. Been here a long time, and so have many of you in this role and other roles, and you need to know that as parents, we appreciate your hard work. Mr. Giordano, you have always stated that you wanted to hear from both sides of the aisle all the time and represent both sides of the aisle, and you have worked hard to do that, and we appreciate that. Thank you for that and for your service. Mrs. Shear, I remember your first Board of Ed meeting here. I don't know what the issue was, but we were here to talk about something, and I was amazed at your ability in your first meeting to speak candidly and honestly and truthfully, and you didn't care what anyone thought. You were going to tell the truth about how you felt, and you've done it every meeting since then, and I have admired you for all your years here, and I wish you well. Mrs. Albanese, I don't even know where to start. You have been on the board since my children were in elementary school. I have sat in many Board of Ed meetings with me down here and you up there in those nine years of yours. You have been the epitome of class and professionalism every step of the way. You were always my favorite, no offense, because like me, you had a soft spot for the arts. And whenever my children were here with something with band or fighting for an agenda or whatever, you always showed that that was important to you, and therefore, we all noticed that as, as parents of children in the arts who often are the first things cut, and you fought hard for them, and we really appreciated that. I feel that you have had some difficult treatment this year, and you didn't deserve it, and I hope that you are going out, as you said, with pride and know that the things that you did here were great, and we really do appreciate it, and I needed you to hear that from this side of the podium. Thank you.
Tori Esposito with Lot Road, I had a question on the superintendent's report. Are you able to disclose, out of the positive staff members or people that get COVID, how many of them were vaccinated? And I only ask that because in a, in a utopian world, if everybody's vaccinated in a, in a classroom and there's 20 kids and five kids get it, then the whole class has to quarantine. So I guess, where do we go from here? I mean, we've come so far as a, as a district, and I'm so happy to hear that, that the close contact stuff is going to get, get violated. I don't want to go back to cohorting, don't want to go back to remote. Kids are wearing masks, my kids are so happy to be in school. So I guess, can you disclose that when you do your reports, so then we can try to figure out where do we go from here, even if they are vaccinated, that they're still getting it? That's it. Thank you.
Madam President, seeing no one rise, I move to close.
Mr. Pavlak?
Second.
Mr. Giordano. Moving on to the committee reports. Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. The Communications Committee met tonight. Board members in attendance, Eileen Albanese, Catherine Kazan, Michael Bubba, and Dawn Kumar, as well as the Administrator, Dr. Mark Toback. We had some discussions about things Dr. Toback has already mentioned in his report, including new quarantine guidelines that just came out late this afternoon. One thing that we did have a lengthy conversation about is a new software program called Insight that the district is exploring at this point to replace Thought Exchange. There's actually some additional abilities that this program might have. It's cost equivalent, and the district is looking at perhaps making a change down the road to something that would be more user-friendly and give members of the community a better opportunity to communicate directly with the people that they have questions for. So something new to come. It's a new software program, and there'll be more information about that to come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Giordano.
Yes, thank you. The Personnel Committee met today. They did not meet last month since there was no agenda, so in attendance is myself, Ms. Putup, and Paula Clark, the Director of HR Compliance and Labor Relations. We moved forward the minutes from the September 23 meeting. The committee had no questions about the agenda. During the meeting itself, we reviewed revised job descriptions in the Business Office and Facilities and Central Office Administration, and that was basically it.
I think that concludes our committee reports. Am I correct? Okay, moving on to the agenda. Can I get a mover?
Madam President, if I can move the entire agenda as a consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Duffy, full agenda, seconded. Mr. Bubba.
Yes.
Discussion. Anyone? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have some retirements to read. Mrs. Putup.
I'm going to read a retirement statement for Mr. Jonathan Prahl. The Wayne Township Public Schools would like to congratulate Mr. John Prahl on his retirement. Mr. Prahl began his career as a physical education teacher in September 2001 and had spent the bulk of his time at Lafayette Elementary School. Students loved attending his gym class because of the fun activities he developed and the positive relationships that he built with his students. He created many lasting memories for his students, especially those surrounding their favorite day of the entire school year, yes, Field Day. We wish Mr. Prahl a wonderful, long, and healthy retirement. It was my pleasure to work with Mr. Prahl, and I wish him well. I also have a retirement statement for Ruth Schechter. Ruth has been a paraprofessional in Wayne Township Public Schools for the last 11 years. During her tenure, Ruth has supported our students and programs as an LPN paraprofessional, serving in various capacities such as one-to-one with individual students, and as a shared paraprofessional, working with all of our students within the classroom setting. Regardless of assignment, she always puts students first and takes her job very seriously. Most recently, Ruth's assignment has been as a job coach, supporting our students as they learn how to become productive and contributing members of our community. Along her journey here in Wayne, Ruth has touched countless lives of fellow colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, the students she has served these many years. The Wayne Township Public School District, and particularly your friends and colleagues at Wayne Valley, wish you a very happy and long retirement with your family. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Bubba.
Elaine Barbieri. Senora Barbieri's career in Wayne Township Public Schools began at Wayne Valley High School in 1999. Elaine taught Spanish at Wayne Valley for nearly 20 years. During that time... During that time, she had the unique ability to connect with students, parents, and her colleagues alike. Her class was student-centered, and every year, her students appreciated her hands-on approach that frequently utilized online resources that created an atmosphere of fun while her students learned. Always eager to help, she was a mentor to many of her colleagues. Her collaborative nature demonstrates her unselfish approach to education, always having the best interest of our students and the World Language Department in mind. In 2017, she was assigned to teach Spanish at Randall Carter, Ryerson, and Pacanac. For the next four and a half years, Senora Barbieri made Spanish an accessible, fun language for the elementary students at all three schools. We wish Elaine the very best in retirement and many safe and enjoyable years spent with her family in Florida. Rumor has it that Elaine will be spending most of her time in Disney World. Congratulations on your retirement.
Mrs. Kumar?
Lori Budd. Ms. Budd began working at Wayne Valley in January of 2005, and she was brought as a fitness and project adventure specialist. Ms. Budd was involved in the design of Mount Demerit, our outdoor climbing tower, along with our climbing elements. Over the years, Ms. Budd has revamped the project adventure curriculum into one of our students' favorite physical education activities based on safety, fun, and achieving the impossible, all while creating an environment where students search for learning opportunities to stretch and grow during the experience. Consequently, Ms. Budd's students learn the importance of teamwork, trust, problem-solving, communication, and connecting with others. Ms. Budd began coaching the boys swimming in the winter of 2006. When Ms. Budd took over, there weren't enough members to fill the roster. Within three years, Wayne Valley was runner-up in the Passaic County Championship, and the following two years, Wayne Valley won back county titles, made the States as the team twice, which culminated in Ms. Budd being selected as the Passaic County Boys Swimming Coach of the Year. Throughout her tenure, she instilled a team mentality, allowing her, our athletes to understand that although they may be alone in the lane, they are a team outside the water. We will miss the impact Ms. Budd had with her project adventure classes and supporting our student athletes. We would like to thank Ms. Budd for everything she's given to Wayne Valley students and staff, and we wish her the very best in the future with her retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Pavlak?
Robert Blanchard. Robert Blanchard joined the Wayne Township Public Schools as the Assistant Director of Facilities Management in September of 2018. Prior to joining our district, Robert worked his way through the Hackensack, Hawthorne, Midland Park, and Fairlawn Public School Systems, holding various supervisory positions in the custodials and facility maintenance. During his time in Wayne, Robert has been instrumental in the management of all aspects of facility maintenance, buildings and grounds, and custodial operations. Mr. Blanchard also provided valuable recommendations for school safety and security planning and spearheaded many district's safety and security improvements. Robert also worked closely with architects and engineers to complete many of the school facilities projects, including the recent opening of the Early Childhood Center at Preckness and the expansion of our kindergarten program. During COVID-19 pandemic, Robert supervised the cleaning and maintenance procedures in all the buildings, ensuring a healthy work environment for staff and students. He worked tirelessly and provided leadership for our custodial and maintenance staff when needed during this difficult time. Since January 2020, Robert has been the interim Director of Facilities Management and has taken on those additional responsibilities, all while maintaining his focus on our staff and students. He continued to hold high custodial standards and at the same time, kept the facilities open and operating. Robert has been a tremendous support to our building administrations and central office team. He always makes himself available to respond to our questions and to help us get the supplies we need on hand to maintain the safest environment in all our schools. Robert is always a pleasure to work with, and we will all appreciate his hands-on approach when it comes to supporting us with our facility needs. Robert, when not at work, enjoys spending his free time through beautiful backroads on his motorcycle with family and friends, enjoying the wind in his hair and even a few bugs in his teeth. We wish him the best in his retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. I think that concludes the retirements. Okay. Next, public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Mover?
Move.
Who was that? Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Shear? Okay. Is this a prank?
Hello. My name is Stephen Kipers, and I'm a former resident of Wayne, New Jersey, and I'm here once again to voice my support for the LGBT content in the school libraries. At the last meeting, I heard many people state that we all want the same thing and to listen to what the other side is saying, and I hope that those assertions were made in good faith, as I implore you to listen to my story. I was four years old when I can imagine my first crush. I saw a man at the grocery store, and I couldn't stop looking. By five years old, I wanted to get an earring just like my dad's, and I was told not to get it in the gay year. By eight years old, I was already hearing stories about distant family members who were gay. He was kicked out of his church, where he played organ for decades, for being gay. Some extended family members wanted nothing to do with him, so he moved to Arizona. I've never met him. By nine years old, I wanted to hang out with my brother and the neighborhood kids. They rode bikes, played on trampolines all summer long, but as soon as I joined, everyone started calling me gay. I was 11 years old when I was finally explained what being gay meant, and I spent the whole night crying. At school, I'm told that I sit like a gay person, run like a pansy, look at your hands like a queer, and now I can't even move without worrying someone might think I'm gay. I was 12 years old when I looked up homosexuality in the Bible, only to read, "The unrighteous shall not inherit God's kingdom." By 13, I had spent the last three years of my life praying to God to not make me gay. Please take this away from me so I can have a normal life. And by 16, I was trying to force myself into relationships with women because if I didn't, people would start asking questions. Now, imagine if there had been a book in the library that could help me understand these things. Imagine if I had teachers who could have educated me on some of these concepts. The fact that in 2010, I thought that there was no hope for me as a gay person in Wayne, New Jersey, that I would be contemplating suicide because I had become so disillusioned and indoctrinated to believe that being gay meant I would never be happy is frankly appalling. But you know what? It doesn't even end there. In 2013, my family started to go to a more progressive church 15 minutes down the road from here. I tried to get involved, volunteer, take classes to become a member, only to be told that I couldn't because I was gay, and they wanted me to swear a vow of chastity. Eventually, I tried to reason with the pastor and an elder, a man I'd known since I was a child. I told them that a gay man following in Jesus' footsteps sounded better than a dead kid in a coffin, but they disagreed. They told me that even though gay marriage is legal, they will never marry me in their church. As an adult, I've worked jobs where coworkers and supervisors passed break room secrets about my sexuality. Up until 2020, I could have been fired for being gay. Wayne Valley didn't even have a Gay-Straight Alliance until 2011, a year after I gradually graduated, and a few months ago, a pride flag was torn down from a church right up the street, my family's church. So do not tell me, an actual, real-life gay person, that there is not anti-LGBT rhetoric at play in Wayne. These books will save lives, and yes, maybe not your kids' lives, but maybe somebody else's kids'. So thank you for listening to me, and again, I go back to the mission statement. We affirm the humanity and dignity of all learners. We enact necessary change for the opportunity and equity for all under the guiding principle that education is a human right. We provide students with equitable access to education that empowers them to positively engage in a democratic society and contribute to a global community. Thank you.
Michael Gottesman. At the last meeting, I began to see some change. The narrative changed from one of division to one of everyone indicating that they were in favor of diversity and inclusion. So I decided it was time for me, as an individual, to take a look at the other side and what their positions were. So I filed an Oprah request and asked that I be provided with copies of the book challenges that had been filed, in hopes of getting a better understanding of how we could bridge the divide and come to some compromise and consensus. I was provided with the, with the submissions of three different individuals, who I've confirmed are members of the Wayne Education Restoration Facebook page, and unfortunately, one of them was absolutely appalling and has really shaken me on our possibility of reaching consensus. And I felt that in the interest of transparency, I really needed to read some of the comments that were made in this challenge. "Any and all material that challenges biological norms must be examined for the dangers it poses to biologically normal students. Emasculation of young men is child abuse. Any child that has a degree of mental instability it requires for them to be confused over their sex, gender, should be handled by a family doctor. The entire book perpetuates lies that contradict science. So tell me, who is going to stand up and fight evil if all the boys are wearing dresses acting like princesses? The book perpetuates lies that contradict science. Any child that has that degree of mental instability that requires them to be confused about sex or gender should be seen as a safety hazard. Transgenderism defies nature and biology. Biology and nature do not in any way support chromosexuality or transgenderism. If everyone was homosexual, the world would go extinct." Let's talk about the science. The American Psychiatric Association said in 1973 that homosexuality is not a mental illness. In 2013, they indicated that transgender is not a mental illness. I mention this tonight because this is what we go up against. I want to find consensus. I want to come to compromise, but as I've said before, if you talk, if you walk the walk, you got, if you talk the talk, you got to walk the walk. If it is, and I'm, and I'm not saying that this is the opinion of everyone on that side, but we need to compromise.
Okay, sir. That's your time.
Nicholas Selenasis. One thing I just wanted to bring up short, so first time in a while, it's going to be short. Probably first time ever, but I, I know there was, you said that, Dr. Toback, you said that we wouldn't do the virtual learning after the holidays, and that's what we're going to try and do to the best of our ability, which is great news because I definitely heard a lot of other things, and I'm glad we're, that that was clarified, we're not going to do that. But I hope we don't look at virtual learning as an option, even if we have all these heavy loads of cases. We need to find a way to do something that will let us be in the building, because virtual learning, it, it killed our brains. It destroyed us. It caused suicidal thoughts in many students, and it was damaging, and even those numbers that were reported at the last meeting were terrifying from the testing, terrifying. And we, we can't, and we're, we're still talking about virtual learning as an option if things get bad enough. I don't think it should be an option, and I hope none of you think it should be an option if things get bad, because if things get bad, we should figure out a way to do it. We've been living with this thing for more than a year. We should figure something out that we could go to school, no matter how bad it gets. If, if it's like a bubonic plague, well, that's different. We're talking about this, like the Omicron that has cold-like symptoms that is not as severe as the other variants. Well, that's been said on even controversial news networks, and scientists have said it, and doctors have said it, other than Dr. Fauci, obviously, but, but in, I, I don't, I don't understand why we would look at that as an option. And also, if this masking works so well, I wonder why so many students are getting COVID. It's interesting. I really think it's very much coming from out of school more so than in the school. It's really, really confusing, but yeah, that's all I have for you tonight.
Harry Prasakos, Wayne, New Jersey. In the spirit of the holiday season and with the peace poll that I see in the back, I just wanted to come up here and say thank you to the outgoing members for offering, you know, your wisdom and your advice and your, your assistance. Also, I wanted to say, you know, I believe Wayne Township Public Schools are a safe space. I believe, you know, we're all human beings, and I think we're all in favor of diversity and inclusion. So if there's a, an issue, you know, I believe that, you know, they get reported, and we have those, those HIB reports. So we had a very difficult campaign this year, you know, something I didn't expect for, for Board of Education, you know, something that was really intense, and everyone's talking about division, you know. So in the spirit of bringing everyone together, you know, I, I wanted to come up here and say that I forgive anyone who, you know, made up nonsense about me and my running mates and, and the other candidates putting out nonsense out there on social media, on flyers. We had pastors, former attorneys, wannabe politicians, you know, teachers' unions, you know, calling us extremists and other, other nonsense. So I wanted to say, you know, I forgive, you know, I'm, I'm a good Christian. We have the peace poll, you know. Hopefully, 2022, we all come together, we all realize, you know, we're all human beings. We're all here pro-education. We're all pro-education. We're all here for the kids. You know, we have 7,500 students in this public school. Hopefully, we can increase the enrollment versus, you know, the declining enrollment that we're seeing. So, and hopefully, we can increase learning and have, have the kids catch up, you know, to what they lost during COVID. So hopefully, we'll, we'll also keep the, the schools open. I know we have the continuous COVID challenge. So just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone, all the holidays that everyone's celebrating, and see you in 2022.
Okay. Mover?
Madam President, seeing no one else rise, I move to close public session.
Second.
Pavlak? Second, Mr. Bubba. Okay. Wrapping up. Did you have anything, Dr. Toback? I think the only question that required a response was the demographer information for Mr. Gottesman.
Yep.
And I think Mr. Esposito wanted to know something about your COVID report.
So as far as Mr. Gottesman's question, enrollment, the anticipated decrease in enrollment is approximately 1,000 students. That's obviously from pre-K, well, actually, those are K-12 statistics. And as far as Mr. Esposito goes, at this point, as far as the students are concerned, the information we have is voluntary, so it doesn't necessarily mean we have accurate figures regarding the vaccination of all of our students, because like I said, that's voluntary. With the staff, we do know there's a requirement. We do not report that. I mean, it's something we could look at. We'd have to take a look, but it's not something that we, we have readily available, but the student part would not be accurate.
Board members? Mrs. Kumar?
I have a question about the 10 days. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by the reduction from 14 days to 10 days and what went around.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Reduction from 14 days to 10 days and what other things kind of went with it. I feel like there was something else. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So the New Jersey Department of Health issued a new CALI report on December 10th. The CALI report indicated that all of New Jersey was reclassified, well, some parts of the state at that point were moderate risk COVID, right? Others were high risk in the South. At that point, the whole state became orange, high risk. At that point, there was a, there was guidance that was also previously provided by the Department of Health that said if a region is in high risk, then the quarantine period went to 14 days. So there were other options previously where you could have a 10-day quarantine, so the district- district previously settled on a 10-day quarantine. That was then elevated to 14. However, those options that we had previously were now restored. As of today, about 3:30, 3:40 this afternoon, we're able to go back to a 10-day quarantine period.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what, how that happened. And then the next question I had was, is there any advice for vaccination in students or anything coming forward from the Department of Health and the possibility of reducing quarantine for maybe those students? I know it's hard, man, to do it really to do it with substitutes and keeping classes, but it's just a question.
Yeah, so in general, the discussion with our local Department of Health here in Wayne was regarding, okay, so we have a number of situations where we have outbreaks in classrooms, but yet those classrooms have students that have vaccines. And so the idea is, we are able to look at and allow those students to return to class, but the issue is what the students will be returning to, because if the rest of the class is under quarantine, so these are at the elementary level, the rest of the students are quarantined, then it's very difficult for the students to return to class, and what kind of learning environment is that, things like that. So those are the types of situations that the district will be addressing. We will make an effort to work with our health department and to allow those students to return. But there's also situations where students are quarantined. So there is, for example, in the days leading up to an outbreak being declared, right? There are typically students a few days in advance that are already placed on quarantine. So let's say your first student in the class tests positive, and say that's on a Thursday. On the following Tuesday, the entire class is quarantined, but those students have already been quarantined. The one that was out the prior Thursday, there was a period of time they were quarantined. So technically, based on the quarantine guidelines, they would be able to return earlier. But again, the question becomes, what is it that you would be returning to as a student, and what kind of a scenario would the student have if they returned to school? So that's what we have to work on due to the shortage of substitutes and staffing problems that we already have. That might be a little bit of a challenge. That's why I said, there's no promises that we're making about how that's exactly going to look, but we're certainly gonna work on it.
No, sorry. You can speak to him after the meeting. Anyone else? Mr. Pavlak?
I'd just like to thank my three fellow board members who are leaving us tonight. It's been a challenging couple of years for everyone up here. And they've always stood up when they needed to. You make a lot of friendships during your time on the board with people, as evident tonight with Mrs. Putup and Mrs. Share. I've had a great friendship as well, and I will continue with Mrs. Albanese, who's always the voice of reason. And just a wonderful person, as is everyone up here. You know, people think we, you know, the only time we're here is when you see us here. We're not, and especially the board president. The board president, you're working seven days a week. It's a full-time job. But everyone's here for the right reason, and the new members coming on are coming on for the right reason. It's about kids. It's about education. And it's about molding our district to be the best in the state. We have one of the best school districts in the state of New Jersey. And we need to, as a group, come together. And to everyone, I have a great holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, please, during that time. Thank you.
Mrs. Putup. Speak a little louder and closer to your mic, people are having a trouble hearing. Thank you.
How's that? Okay. Again, I want to say thank you to my colleagues who are retiring from this phase of their public life, but I'd like to think that we will see each other again, whether it's another committee in the school district or other service in the township. And I want to wish everyone very happy holidays. I know that not everyone celebrates Christmas. Hanukkah just passed. But however you celebrate, I want us to all look forward to a wonderful, happier, and healthier 2022. Thank you.
Mrs. Share.
I just wanted to take a moment to say happy holidays to everybody. And I wanted to take a moment just to talk to the Wayne teachers and the WEA. It has been a privilege to work with you, and I want the teachers to know that I still have their back, even though I am not on this board. The teachers are the backbone of this district, and they deserve a huge thank you, and they deserve a very nice vacation right now. Because as someone who's in the schools on a daily basis, you really have no concept what the teachers are facing right now, as far as the amount of work, the stress from helping these kids get through the tradition, the transition of coming back from school. And I just want all the teachers to know that they are very much appreciated, in my eyes, and please enjoy the holiday break. Thank you.
Mrs. Kumar.
I wanted to separate my final comments on purpose. First, I do want to thank all of our outgoing board members for all of their service. I've only been on the board shortly, but I really do appreciate all of your insight. And these past few years serving during a pandemic have definitely not been easy, and I admire all of your dedication, everyone on the board's dedication these past few years. And I really just hope everyone here and in the rest of the community enjoy their holidays, remain safe and healthy, and hopefully, we have a good 2022. That's it.
Mrs. Albanese.
This will be the last meeting for the Wayne Board of Education for this year. I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. In January, the board will reform, elect new leadership. So I wanted tonight to thank Mrs. Kazan and Mrs. Putup for stepping up into leadership roles for the last two years, for all the committee work you have done, and the long hours that you have put in in order to make sure that we have the organization that we have, your work with the administration, your communication to the board. I want to say thank you for your service to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Bubba?
I just want to say, first, everybody, I hope everybody has a happy and healthy holidays. Happy holidays is nice, but healthy at this point in time is probably much better. I want to say to the outgoing board members, I'm going to miss, not the arguments, not the late nights where we, you know, fought in chambers, because that's been done before, too. But really, for always just being there and believing in what you believe in. We don't always agree. God knows that happens all the time. But we all walk out of it holding our head up high, knowing that we did the right thing. And that's what I want, really, the outgoing board members to know. Always know you did the right thing. Wasn't always pretty, we didn't always get our way, you didn't always get your way. Just, it's the way that things work. So that's kind of what I want to say to the old board members and to the new ones. I will say again, come in, really, really understand and jump in and, looking for the right word at the moment. Well, no, I wasn't, the participation, you're going to do no matter what, because that's what, you're going to be there. Just understand that there is a greater good, and while an individual want or need is an individual want or need. Everything that happens on this board is a consensus, and that's what we're trying to build, a consensus to get to the next level. And then when we reach that level, the consensus will be to get to the next level after that. It's all steps, but it has to be done in a consensus. It is not a me game. So that's kind of just the message I want to relay, is that it's not about me, it's about all of us, because nothing gets done without five votes. So happy holidays, and I've talked enough tonight, so I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Anyone else? Any administrators? Oh, Mr. Dr. Toback.
So I know, Mrs. Kazan, you're about to make a statement, and what I wanted to do was just basically take a moment to thank Mrs. Kazan and Mrs. Putup for their leadership as officers on the Board of Education. I would like to say that being a board president at this moment in time is probably the most difficult time ever to be a Board of Education president, whether it's here in Wayne or in any other community. But tough people respond in tough situations, and in many cases, they stand tall, even under difficult circumstances. And Mrs. Kazan, I believe you, as board president, stood tall during your entire time as the board president, and you've dealt with a lot of very difficult scenarios. And what's even more impressive is the fact that you're a volunteer. You do this for your love of the school system, your love of the students, and the love of the community. So I would just like to recognize you for your perseverance, your leadership, your commitment to the community, and your continued influence on the school district, whether as president or as board member. Something I'll always remember.
Thank you so much, Dr. Toback. That means a lot to me. Now I'm all choked up, I have to make my comments. I don't? Yes, I do. Be quiet. I get the last word for the last time. I was struggling with a positive year-end message this year. Despite the availability of vaccines, we are still in the throes of the pandemic. We continue to deal with the struggle to keep all students in the classroom, no matter how hard we try. I truly sympathize with parents who need to deal with the issue of childcare during these quarantine periods that are starting to pop up once again. While we've made tremendous progress, we continue to have those challenges. The important thing to know is that we all want what you want. We always have and will continue to. Our goal is simple: educate every child who comes through our doors and give them everything we can within our power to succeed. I can't overlook the clear division in our community. I can only hope that we can all find a way to improve our communication with each other and move forward toward compromise on the issues that are lingering. I'm willing to work on that in the best interests of the students and staff. We must. This is to come to an end. It's causing harm to everyone involved. We just heard a very passionate speech from a former student. Frustrations are understandable, but we have to figure out a way to handle our discourse better. These meetings are not working. I believe in some cases, they're making things worse. Tonight, we say goodbye to three community servants: Eileen, with nine years of service, Stacy with five, Matt with three. All of these trustees have worked hard and put in countless hours of their time to serve all of you. I hope you take the time to thank each of them. Whether you agree with a vote or a comment or not, it is important to look at the totality of one's contribution. These members have contributed plenty. We are also losing a group with vast knowledge of what has been done and what yet needs to be done in our district. There is something to be said for experience. I'm hopeful that we can welcome a new board in January and move forward in a positive direction. Tonight is my last meeting as board's president. It's been a difficult two years for education and to be in this position during it. Although being in this position has given me a closer look at the day-to-day of the district and taught me quite a bit. If you think wrangling the community is hard, try to herd board members to consensus. We are a tough and passionate crowd. I don't expect that to change. I thank everyone who stepped, who stepped up and supported me in this role and look forward to sitting to the side as a trustee once again. I'm not leaving, just switching seats. Finally, thank you to our teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, substitutes, and central office for all you've done to keep us going during this pandemic. I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. See you all back here in January, where we will roll up our sleeves and get back to work. Thank you. And finally. Mr. Bubba, you're moving to close. Mr. Pavlak, you're seconding.